Business meeting to order on March 2nd. Mr. Treasurer, will you please call the roll?
President Adair.
Present.
Ms. Beckerly.
Present.
Mr. Brown.
I'm here.
Mr. Cole.
Present.
Dr. Pierce. Mr. Ragland.
Here.
Vice President Reyes.
Here.
You have a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you so much. We will do the pledge of allegiance led by our own Vice President, Ramona Reyes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I stood up there and my ear buds left my ears. Before we get started, I just wanted to address an incident that happened last week that involved our engagement meeting. And it's really critical that as a community, we don't tolerate instances of any type of bullying or threats. And we have rules for our students. And it's critical that we make sure that we provide safe spaces to have dialogue and to be able to share information. Anytime that we have a situation where people are not following rules or living up to community standards, I've asked the superintendent and the team to consider rules of engagement. And especially online, we will work to eliminate any such people that are creating unsafe spaces. And so, community, we want you to participate, but we really need to do it in a way that's safe for everyone. So, I've asked our administration to work on that. We'll determine if a board policy is needed. But it's the same thing. When we're in school, we have these rules about communication, about anti-bullying, and it must extend out to the community. And so, just know that that was not acceptable. We want to make sure that even tonight, as you are typing in this stream, we are using respectful language. We are sharing our ideas, even if you disagree, in a manner that is respectful to everyone. So if we can all use those community standards, that would be much appreciated. And we're going to take formal, more formal action and allow the community to understand what the consequences will be when those kind of community standards are violated. So I just wanted to take a few moments to say that publicly because that type of behavior is not acceptable and our staff and our superintendent should not be subject to those sort of messages. Okay, board members, our agenda tonight is as follows. We have no board recognition. We do have two public comments. We have a notice of public hearing on reemployment. We have a report from our superintendent and our internal auditor. No report expected from our treasurer. We have an item on board matters. And of course, we have our consent agenda, which has lots of items. And then we will move into announcements, followed by executive session and adjournment. Are there any, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any additions, comments about the agenda? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Treasurer, please call the roll.
President Adair.
Yes.
Ms. Beckerly.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Cole.
Yes.
Dr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mr. Ragland.
Yes.
Vice President Reyes.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Okay, we are going to move down to item four, which is our public comment. Public participants have four minutes to address the board. Board liaison Nichols, who is here in the building but in a different room, will bring the first caller on the line, who is Mary Kline, and her topic is concerns of return to in-person learning. The action she would like is I would like the board to address my concerns for blended learning. Ms. Nichols?
President Adair, the speaker's on the line.
Good evening. You have four minutes to address the board. You may begin.
Our Vice President Reyes, internal auditors and members of the board. I appreciate this opportunity to talk to you directly about my concerns with moving into a blending blended learning structure. I need to tell you that I really want to trust that you have made this decision with the health and safety of each and every person in our Columbus City Schools community is the priority. But my gut tells me that is not the case. I'd like to use this time to ask you some questions. I will read them. Then, when I finish reading my questions during the remainder of my four minutes, I would appreciate responses from whoever is the most appropriate person to answer them. Question one. Please explain how it is a better choice to move to in-person learning, thus removing half the days of direct instructions for students during the remainder of this school year, especially regarding accelerated AP and IB classes? Objectively, why is this a better solution than continuing remote learning? Regarding what's happened in the four weeks, kindergarten through fifth grade has returned to blended learning? Question number two. Where have you published transparent analytical information about kindergarten through fifth grade returning to in-person schools? Specifically, I'm interested in question three. How many individual instances of positive COVID cases and question six. What is this threshold? The exact number of positive COVID cases that will return individual schools in the entire district to remote learning? I ask for this specific metric because the district has been non-committal about this number. Lastly, I'd like to mention an article in today's New York Times, the title of which is "Should Your School Be Fully Open? Here's What the CDC Says." So, I'm sure you can guess where this is going. The answer for us in Franklin County, Ohio, is no. Our positive cases per 100,000 people is 188.04. That is from the district's website today. And the threshold that would indicate it is advisable to return to in-person school is 100 cases per 100,000. So we are obviously over that threshold. I thank you for your time and your attention to these questions, both for my family and all the others in our community who mirror my concerns.
Thank you so much. There was a moment you broke up, and so we did not hear questions, I believe, four and five. If you could repeat those.
Sure. Question four is how sustainable is this cross-cohort blending as a solution through the remainder of this school year? And question five is how many classes have returned to remote learning because of COVID exposure?
Okay, thank you for repeating that. I'm sorry we had a little breakup issue, but I believe we have all of your questions on record now. Board members, do you have any clarifying questions or comments? Board Member Brown.
Thank you and thank you, Ms. Kline. Appreciate your interest and your concerns. I'm assuming that, and please tell me if not, that you're the same Mary Kline that sent the email and that I answered?
Yes, I am the same person.
Okay, I thought so. Are these questions? I think you're asking now a different set of questions than what you put in the email?
I'm asking similar, yes. My questions in the email were primarily about airflow through school buildings.
Right.
I still, you know, I still do not feel convinced that Columbus City Schools has been able to address all of those issues. I, you know.
But what you're asking now are some additional questions? Is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, correct.
I can tell you that your emails are exchange, has been put in the hands of the appropriate administrative person. I got confirmation of that earlier today. And somebody will be getting back in touch with you. I'm not sure if that's going to be John Stanford or Maurice Oldham or somebody in their department, but you'll get a response to those things. You know, and I guess you'll separately get a response to today's questions.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that.
Dr. Pierce.
I'm not sure this is, well, I'll make it a question. Ms. Kline, can you please clarify when you say transparency to the community? Do you want the responses to your questions shared with our entire community? Or do you want an individual response to your emails and tonight's comments?
I would like both. I mean, I think they're both important. I mean, so we have a COVID dashboard on the Columbus City Schools website. You know, I think it would be important information going forward for people like myself who are really concerned about adding more kids to school buildings, what the process has, not what the process has been, but what the results have been with kindergarten through fifth grade. And, you know, where are the successes and where are places for improvement? How has that been going?
Thank you so much for your response. So I asked that question as a point of clarification for Board Member Brown. His question or his information indicated that you would get an individual response to those emails based on the correspondence that you and he had. I also want to bring light that multiple board members received that email and responded to you as well. I think the critical, the decision point or something that needs to be noted at this point is in these comments right now, you are asking that those responses or the answers to your questions via email as well as in comment right now be shared with the entire community to create additional transparency. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Dr. Pierce. We will be getting your responses back and we will share that information with the community. We do have our frequently asked questions and the COVID dashboard and other information available. But we really do appreciate your questions and your concern and certainly your advocacy on behalf of your students and others. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much for your time tonight.
Okay, our next caller is scholar Takum, and there's concerns of blended learning is the topic. The action requested is I would like the board to come up with an alternative to blended learning. And so we will wait for Ms. Nichols to bring back our caller.
President Adair, the speaker's on the line.
Thank you so much. You have four minutes to address the board. You may begin.
Good evening, President Adair, Vice President Reyes, Treasurer, Internal Auditor, Members of the Board, and Superintendent Dr. Dixon. I'm the parent of a CAS student who attends, who's a tenth grade student at CAS. On February 26, 2021, I received an email like the many parents who had children in grade six to 12 about the blended learning plan. I also attended the parent engagement meeting that evening, and I and many parents who attended respectfully voided comments in the chat that we were told there were no answers. It's a good idea to want to have six to 12 grade students back to the school. The parent's opinion was not sought through a survey. My daughter attends CAS and is in 10th grade. Blended learning will only give her two days of interaction with a teacher as opposed to the four days in remote learning. There are many students in her humanity class that will not provide a safe, fixed distance between students. Many parents, including myself, are requesting that in addition to the blended learning, they should give students the option to continue in remote learning with teachers who are planning to take a leave instead of returning to the building. We have only nine more weeks left of school. Digital Academy is not an option because my daughter spoke to her counselor and the counselor told her, if you go to, I'm quoting my daughter, she said, "If you go to Digital Academy, you have to retake or start the second semester from the beginning until now." Part of the class that she signed up for, with only a few weeks left in third quarter, it's almost impossible to do nine weeks of work in two or less weeks. And this is just for one of her courses. This means in every class that she's taking, she'll have to spend more time trying to get caught up in the digital academy. So I think for high school students, nine to 12th grade, I do understand wanting 12th graders to go back to the building because we don't, we want them to have an experience of graduation. But I don't think all high school students are ready for this remote, this blended learning option. So I, like many other parents, I know there are more than 2,000 parents in Columbus City Schools who have students in high school who would prefer for their students to have another option, which allows them to continue in their current program without having to switch to the digital academy because we do not feel safe sending our kids back to school in addition to the fact that we have families that are in multi-generational homes and not everybody has been immunized. And talk about hallways filling up with students, not maybe wearing their mask and exposure, and that can cost too many families. And we counted how many days my daughter, if she even had to go to the blended learning, she'll have to spend only 17 days in a building. And is that worth her getting sick, bringing illness to my home and also affecting her other siblings? So I really think we should have a third option in addition to the digital academy. They should be a day in the parent engagement meeting. Thank you very much. I respectfully want to hear what you guys have to say with it, please.
Thank you so much for addressing the board. Dr. Pierce, do you have a clarifying question?
I do indeed. Thank you so much, President Adair. Ms. Takum, thank you so much for coming to address the board. We definitely appreciate your comments and your concerns. My clarifying question is when your student indicated that she had had the meeting with her counselor, did the counselor follow up with you to provide you with information of how we are offering courses this summer? The length of time that those courses will meet? Just any additional information to help you as the parent and caregiver understand our options for not just, you know, not just summer, but also for Digital Academy?
No, the counselor do not. And I don't think my daughter will have to do work in the summer when she's already in her program and she is a 4.0 student. She is a 4.0 student, and I don't want her to appear to be messed up because she has to do Digital Academy and she has to do all the work in nine weeks when she's almost at the end of the third semester. We have three weeks left for the third semester. Why would she have to go back and redo everything? Because we don't want her to be back in the building because we don't feel safe yet. Safe enough for everyone to be back in the building. Granted, elementary schools can't be back in the building. It's easier to do with the young ones than for our high schoolers who have more students and it's really not safe yet.
Last clarifying question. And let's just talk about your high schoolers right now. Have your, has your school, has CAS had a building-wide meeting, a parent meeting? Have there been meetings with specific cohorts? Whether those cohorts are grade-related or related to specialty programs such as IB? Have there been specific meetings to focus on the unique needs of the student population in your building?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Are there additional clarifying questions? Okay, thank you so much for taking the time to address the board and to advocate for your student. You know, please make sure you stay in contact with your school, and we really appreciate you sharing your thoughts and feelings with us this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, we are going to move now down to item five, which is notice of public hearing on reemployment of retired employee. Notice of public hearing on reemployment of Cheryl L. Stevens. Pursuant to a Higher Advice Code Section 3309.345, the Columbus Board of Education gives notice that Cheryl L. Stevens, part-time hourly administrator who will retire from the Columbus City Schools effective April 30, 2021, is seeking employment with the Columbus City Schools as a part-time hourly administrator effective May 6, 2021. The board will hold a public hearing on May 5, 2021, at 5:30 at a location designated for the public meeting of the Board of Education or virtually in the case of the continued pandemic on the issue of Dr. Stevens' reemployment. We have hereby given notice of that meeting, that hearing, I'm sorry. Okay, we are going to now move into item six, which is the report from our superintendent. Madam Superintendent, over to you.
Thank you, President Adair. Tonight I will, let's see, we're ready. Tonight I will provide you with several updates to our blended learning transition plan and outline the steps we are taking to ensure a safe return of our students to their classrooms. Last week, we announced the dates for the phased-in return of our students in grades six through 12 back to their classrooms. Students in grade six, 11th and 12th were transitioned to blended learning starting the week of March 15. And students in grades seven, eight, nine, and 10 were transitioned to blended learning starting the week of March 22. These dates mark another significant milestone in the long road through this pandemic. It's been nearly a year since our current reality started with the statewide closure of schools. As we approach that anniversary, I am excited that we are able to offer all of our students an opportunity for in-person learning. Every day counts for our students, and getting them back in their classrooms is important for their academic and social emotional development. This is especially critical for our seniors who are working towards graduation in the coming months. These middle and high school students have been learning remotely since the fall, and I am glad we will be able to bring them back just as we were able to successfully transition students groups to blended learning in early February. Before we look ahead to March, it's important to note where we were in February. We were intentional with our phased-in approach as we transitioned students on-site last month, which allowed us to ensure we had the proper mitigation strategies and protocols in place for a safe return. It's critical that we deploy that same approach this month as we move ahead with the next phase of our blended learning transition. Here are several significant dates from last month. On February 1st, we welcome back students in grades pre-K through three, career and technical education students at Columbus Downtown High School and the Fort Hays Career Center, and students with complex needs in grades pre-K through 12. Cohort A students started on this date, while cohort B students started on Thursday, February 4. The following week, students in grades four and five joined these student groups for blended learning cohort A, started on February 8, and cohort B on February 11. As if the transition to blended learning was not challenging enough, we were also faced with the barrage of winter weather, which forced us to cancel classes for three straight Tuesdays, February 2nd, 9th, and 16th. Last month also marked the beginning of our vaccination plan with Columbus Public Health. CCS teachers and staff largely started to get their first dose of the COVID-19 vaccine on February 3rd and the days that followed. Three weeks later, February 24th, many of these teachers and staff received their second dose of the Pfizer vaccine. To allow flexibility of our vaccination plan and minimize significant interruptions to staffing as a result of side effects, we set three days as remote learning for all students, February 5th, February 25th, and February 26. As we look ahead to March and early April, here are some important dates to note. Yesterday and today, March 1st and 2nd, were designated as remote learning days for all students to accommodate the second dose of our vaccination plan. This upcoming Friday, March 5th, would be an asynchronous remote learning day for all students in grades six through 12, including CTE and complex need students. This is in alignment with the district's Secondary Grading and Students' Progress Plan guidance. Next week, starting March 8, our teachers and staff in our middle schools, high schools, and those supporting grades six through eight at our K through six or K through eight buildings will return to on-site work as we prepare to welcome students back the following week. Starting the week of March 15, we will transition students in grades six, 11, and 12 to blended learning. The following week, starting March 22, we will transition the remainder of our grade levels with students in seventh, eighth, ninth, and 10th grade moving to blended learning. The third quarter ends on March 23, which means that we will be in the final stretch of the school year when we will have more than 40,000 students in our blended learning model. By the middle of March, we expect that more than 5,000 CCS teachers and staff, which is more than half of our total employees, will be fully vaccinated with two doses of the Pfizer vaccine. Finally, spring break starts on April 2 and continues through the following week. I hope that provides with a comprehensive picture of where we have been over the past month and where we're headed as a district in the coming weeks. I will now turn it over to my team to provide additional updates, starting with the Chief of Transformation and Leadership, Dr. Angela Chapman.
Good evening.
Good evening. We know that for many of our students, March fifteenth and March twenty-second will be the first time that they will be in their buildings. Principals and staff are planning these weeks like they would for the first week of school. They are creating orientation plans, welcoming and getting-to-know-you programming, as well as school-community building plans. We also know, even for our returning students, school will not look the same. Building staff are making plans to ensure these students have all the information they need to return safely and successfully. Building-specific plans for arrival dismissal, how to use lockers, breakfast, lunch, and class transitions will all be shared by principals, teachers, and support staff. Counselors and social workers and other support staff continue to work with our various student populations to ensure wraparound support during this transition period. Small group intervention circles, individual counseling, academic attendance and engagement meetings are just some of the examples of the wraparound support for our students. We also are continuing to work with our mental health and community providers. For our high school students, in addition to wraparound SCL supports, intentional support for college, career, and workforce readiness will occur through building staff and community and school partners. From college and scholarship essay writing to job applications and resume creation, comprehensive in-person student support structures are in place and ready.
Thanks, Dr. Chapman. Now we will go to Mrs. Gillison for student support and engagement.
Right, good evening, good evening, everyone. As Dr. Dixon and Dr. Chapman shared, we are looking forward. And when you think about the work that we're doing, we can't do it alone. And we have a plethora of community partners that are right there beside us. I want to start with the Learning Extension Centers because I hear a lot of communication about students only having two days of instruction in class. Please keep in mind, our Learning Extension Centers are there five days a week with support from Otterbine, the Ohio State University, and volunteers ready to help support our young people. We also have the continued senior supports, and that's the support in the building with the counselors and the senior teams. But our Learning Extension Centers have also created Senior Success Centers. So if there are seniors out there who may be deficient a couple of credits, our Learning Extension Center teams have undergone training and they're ready to support our seniors. And then you talk about communicating with our community and communicating building plans. We're working with our bilingual liaisons to record messages via their cell phone so we can share these messages. So our Somali community will have Somali messages and they will be text message to them and in the languages for our communities to make sure everyone's hearing the same message and knowing that we're excited to have them back. And then the partnership with CODA. The district has garnered a partnership with CODA and our student ambassadors or Dr. Dixon's superintendent's ambassadors will also be CODA ambassador ambassadors and they will be trained on, it's called ride training, so they can share that with their peers. But not only our superintendent ambassadors, but our bilingual liaisons are going to be trained so that they can share that with the communities that they are serving. So the all-hands-in effort, our community partners are absolutely amazing and we thank them for leaning in with us to make sure this becomes a reality. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gillison. Now we'll go to Mike DeFabo from Human Resources.
Thanks so much, Dr. Dixon, and hello, board. The last time we talked, we talked a little bit about this Critical Staffing Work Group. And I wanted to bring some transparency to the work that we've been doing. We created this group to evaluate our absence data and really identify and address staffing needs that we saw pop up as we went into hybrid learning from remote learning. We look at district-level data and building-level data. And we have a focus on what is happening at every single school building individually. And those buildings are represented both by their area superintendents and also program managers from pre-K and our complex needs, special needs populations. So we have a hierarchy in place when a teacher isn't there. We obviously want to start with a substitute teacher. We then moved to classroom reassignment and finally to alternate internal coverage and potentially alternate external coverage. So I think it's important to note that the buildings put together these plans and we put that hierarchy in place because we want that continuity of education for our students. So when we have to take some actions when our staffing is critical, and this could happen for many reasons, teachers on leave or we have several teachers out on one day at a building, we can return the classroom to remote learning. We've done a little bit of that, not much. We can also return a grade level to remote learning and also the building to remote learning. And I just want to really flag for everyone that that is our last-case scenario and never preferred. But we do again want to focus on the continuity of student, continuity of education for our students. And so as soon as we take action on any of these spaces, we're immediately working to address the situation so that we can get our buildings back open and hybrid. We have been largely successful in doing that. To date, we've, we've only had four buildings that had to go remote and only a handful of classrooms. We have plans to return almost all of those buildings to a hybrid learning environment for certain grade levels and we continue to build on those grade levels. We also have reopened many of our classrooms. So I hope this helps to frame some of what we were talking about last week and this really intentional work that this group is doing to make sure that we know what's happening at every single building and we're making sure that we have the staff in place to support our students onsite. Thanks so much.
Okay. Next, we have an update on transportation from our Transportation Director, Steve McElroy.
Thank you, Dr. Dixon. The Office of Transportation will provide five hundred and thirty-five bus routes for our students for in-person learning. We currently have five hundred and eighty-six active bus drivers and we have seventy-three of our drivers out on FFCRA or leave of absence. Our bus information will be provided, one, in our parent portal on March fifth and also by postal mail on March eighth. Additional information is that we have sixteen charter and non-public schools yet to return to in-person learning as of today. Also, we sent out a second needs assessment and our total for our needs assessments from the first and second send was one thousand two hundred and eighty-eight families who agreed to provide their students with transportation to and from school. I must add that three hundred and fifty-five of those families agreed to this after our second needs assessment survey. And we are continually counting our student ridership and therefore some of our students will, bus stops will be eliminated due to ridership.
So thank you, Mr. McElroy, and thank you to the team for providing those important updates. So while we're on the topic of transportation, I want to highlight a piece of legislation that is on the agenda tonight for your consideration. We are requesting the Board of Education's approval to spend two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars of federal CARES Act funding on a new partnership with CODA. This partnership will provide eight thousand CODA passes to CCS students in grades eight through twelve. These passes will be at no cost to the students or their families and could be used for extracurricular activities, internships, and other important enrichment experiences such as summer programs or to get to and from school if they prefer. It is important to note that these passes are supplemental and do not replace the district's yellow bus services that are provided to students who qualify for transportation to and from school. If approved, these passes will be active through August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one. CODA and CCS will provide school-specific maps showing all of the nearby bus stops and routes around each of the district schools. And we are also working on developing ride-training resources for students. And Mrs. Gillison spoke to that earlier. We believe that this new partnership with CODA would be a great benefit for our students and their families. And we are looking forward to empowering our students with another resource. We opened registration on Monday for the twenty twenty-one CCS Summer Experience. Already, we have had more than six hundred students sign up for the program, which is available for all students pre-K through twelve. I encourage our families to visit our websites for more details or log on to their parent portal to sign up. In fact, over on our, our other YouTube channel, we have our weekly virtual family engagement session happening right now. The topic tonight and for every Tuesday through the month of March is summer programming. So families can watch live or visit our website for an on-demand replay of each session. Finally, I would like to end my report with some important reminders for students and families who may be watching. Wear a mask every day to school. These are required for all students and staff. You can safely show your style by wearing your own mask from home. Oh, we will provide a mask for you at the door. And tonight I have a mask from Southwood Elementary School. I'm going to show for just a few minutes. I couldn't put it on properly, but this is Southwood. So all of you students who attend Southwood, I'm wrapping your school tonight. All right, so I'm gonna try to leave this on. Stay home if you are feeling sick. Bring your Chromebook to and from school and make sure your Chromebook is charged. And for those students walking or riding a bike, be alert and follow any designated safe routes to and from your school. For motorists out there, it is critical that you go slow and be alert in the early mornings and afternoons as our students get to and from school each day. Our new CAT COVID dashboard is now live on our website with detailed information about cases in our district. As more students return to school, it is important for families to know that we will be sending out notification letters when there is a positive COVID case in a building or when there has been an exposure. These letters do not necessarily mean your student has been exposed or must quarantine. If your student is exposed or requires further actions, you will be notified personally. As always, you can contact your child's school if you ever have a question about a notification letter. Finally, I encourage our families to visit the Blending Learning Hub on our website. We have a trove of resources available there, including information, FAQs, and videos that explain all you need to know as we prepare for the next phase of our transition to blended learning. And another reminder, families, please be on the lookout for emails, letters, announcements from your school about specific information for your school. Those would be robo calls, emails, letters. Please make sure you're on the lookout for those from your principals regarding any orientations, meeting, et cetera. Those will be coming to you if they've not already come to you already, they will be coming soon. So thank you. This will conclude my report at this time. Me and my team are available for any questions answered if needed.
Thank you, Superintendent. We have a question from Board Member Ragland.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Dr. Dixon, for the report. My question is around transportation. Mr. McElroy, thank you for, for that information and for getting us up to speed, making sure that we get our students to school. You had mentioned that there will be a, a group of students whose routes have been eliminated. I'd like to know how we are alerting those families who students have, have had their routes eliminated due to lack of ridership. I'd like to know how we're alerting them. I'd like to know the frequency with which we're alerting them. I'd like to know if, if we have a mechanism in place to assure that the outreach that we give to the family is heard and responded to. The one thing that I would like to avoid is parents who may not have engaged with us up to this point thinking that their bus stop and their route remains and not knowing because of maybe a transition that they've made as the family during COVID or, or anything, not knowing that that route has been eliminated, sending a student out to the bus stop and then the student not being picked up by a bus. I want to make sure that we're doing everything under our power, and I know that we are. But I'd just like for the public to hear the, the operations that we are undergoing to make sure that they're alerted of this and to make sure that we know that they heard us when we tell them that, that that bus is no longer coming to pick up their young person.
Well, President Adair, Board Member Ragland, thank you for the question, sir. And excellent questions at that. The Office of Transportation is working with the Office of Communications currently to gather that information of those students who have been removed from routing to communicate to those families exactly that, that they have been removed. We always like to remind the community that they can always, one, contact their building administrator for transportation services and they can call our Transportation Office at six one four three six five five zero seven four. So again, to answer your question, sir, we are identifying those in our system now and working with our Office of Communications and our IT Department to be able to communicate clearly to those families what has taken place.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for that. My next question is concerning the other charter and non-public schools that have not gone back into a hybrid model. Are we certain that those schools will remain all virtual for at least the rest of this particular school year? Or have we made contingencies for transporting those additional students should they decide at some later point that they are going to return back to some sort of a hybrid model? I, I am, you know, I'm wondering if, if we have reached a threshold where, you know, it's, it's, we can't do anything else. And if you haven't made a decision as of now, then I think you're gonna end up being a virtual school for the remainder of the school year. But have we made those types of contingencies?
Well, President Adair, Board Member Ragland, thank you for your second very good question, sir. We, the Office of Transportation communicates directly with those schools with their plan for returning. We also reach out to those charter non-public schools requesting that they provide us a list of students who will actually receive yellow bus transportation. And based on that information, And based on that information, we will decide if we can provide yellow bus services for those children. Also, sir, please remember that we do have the ability to declare students eligible but impractical for transportation if we exceed the resources needed to provide yellow bus services.
So would it be safe for you to say that we currently have transportation in order? And I know this is one of those things where, you know, not everyone is going to like what we have in order. But is it safe to say that based on the current plan, we are able to transport those identified students for Columbus City Schools as well as those identified schoolchildren for our charter and non-public based on the plan that you've articulated over the last several weeks?
Or President Adair, Board Member Ragland, it is safe to say that we are providing transportation services for the schools who have currently returned to in-person learning. We do have to look at the other schools, those 16 who have not returned in-person learning to determine if we do have the capacity to provide yellow bus services to those schools.
Thank you very much. And thank you and your team for, I'm sure, what a Herculean effort in making sure that all students in our city are getting to and from school very safely. That concludes my questions. Madam President, thank you again, Dr. Dixon.
I can't get unmuted. There we go. Thank you, Board Member Ragland. Dr. Pierce, you are next.
Thank you so much, President Adair. I'll keep the conversation around transportation going. So this question is specifically, we relaunched our transportation survey. Are we able to launch that survey? Or were we able to get any feedback from our private charter school parents who may, in fact, want to opt out of transportation and provide the same opportunity to support our district by taking their students to school directly as opposed to our yellow buses?
Or President Adair, Dr. Pierce, thank you for your question, ma'am. And the surveys that, and needs assessment surveys that we provided to Columbus City Schools families were also provided to our charter non-public families as well. We are currently receiving information from those charter non-public schools, from families who also have decided to provide transportation for their students. So based on the information that we receive from those specific schools, we also adjust our routes accordingly, meaning that those students will also not receive yellow bus services for the remainder of this school year.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. And I want to also understand if we were able to leverage our relationship with Coda in bringing our charter private school partners to the table to also provide an opportunity for them to get the conversation going with Coda so their students can get the same option that our students have in terms of those Coda passes to also help alleviate some of our transportation challenges that we're having. So have we been able to leverage our positioning with Coda to bring some of our charter and private school partners to the table to be in the same program?
Or President Adair, Dr. Pierce, currently, the Office of Transportation is providing yellow bus services for our charter non-public school students. Therefore, these Coda passes will not be provided to those charter students.
And if I can add to that, Dr. Pierce, our Coda passes are for extracurricular and after-school opportunities for students. Our Coda will not be used to transport our students to school daily. We have enough room on our current yellow buses to transport our students. But we wanted an opportunity to provide students, if they wanted to go, for example, to an LEC on Wednesday during their remote day, if they wanted to do any extracurricular activities after school, and also have the pass for summer programming. So this was a great opportunity to provide, to provide students with supplemental transportation, not their main transportation to be utilized during the school day.
Thank you so much for that, Dr. Dixon. So in this particular instance, is it still the case that our transportation can provide supplemental transportation for charters and, you know, private schools if they enter into, you know, agreements with us? So say there's a student that is playing in a particular sport, you know, at their homeschool, is our yellow bus taking them there? In that particular instance, are those students being afforded the Coda pass as well?
Or President Adair, Dr. Pierce, I understand the question. Columbus City Schools' yellow bus transportation, our Office of Transportation only provides athletic transportation for Columbus City School students. We do not provide athletic yellow bus transportation for charter non-public school students, nor do we provide them Coda passes.
Thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate that. My next couple of questions then relate to specifically the school and student preparation. Our second public comment, Scholar Take'em, indicated quite clearly that there may be an opportunity for our building-level staff to start to communicate in earnest and in meaningful strategic ways with families prior to that timeline of, I want to say you had specific dates in March, March 15th or 23rd. Is there opportunity for our building administrators to begin to conduct Zoom meetings with grade cohorts, with families, to be able to address some of the concerns that our families are raising before you get to this period of reorientation?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Pierce. I would like Dr. Chapman to chime in on what's being done in each of the regions. Dr. Chapman?
Absolutely. To Dr. Pierce's question, thank you, Dr. Dixon, for teeing this question up. So certainly, we have two weeks before the reopening of our secondary schools for middle school and high school. There will be certainly an increase in engagement opportunities for families to connect with their, to learn about the orientation to school. So when we think about our transitioning grades, so our sixth graders that are starting middle school or ninth graders that are starting high school, they've never been to the building before, right? So they have been working with their teachers, meeting with their teachers, but transitioning to their campus will be a brand-new experience. So we have talked with our principals about setting up orientations particularly for those transition grades, but really for all of the grades at secondary, middle school, and high school to make sure that they're clear about the expectations because school will look different, right? It will look different for our students. It will feel different. Those transitions, what arrival looks like, what dismissal looks like. All of our principals and teams are working diligently to revamp their processes to ensure that arrival and dismissal is done safely and adhering to all of our safety, our health and safety guidelines, how students will transition in between classrooms using the water fountains. We're not using water fountains, so we have water bottles. We have disposable water bottles for students. So there's lots of conversations, engagement, interactions that our principals are planning and prepping for, for a safe return, safe and successful return for our secondary students in middle school and high school.
Thank you so much, Dr. Chapman. I truly appreciate it. You indicating that we won't be using water fountains. A couple of our students have reached out to me to ask if they will be able to use their lockers. Do we know if they will be able to use their lockers?
So we recommended, we have a reopening guidebook that we share with all of our school leaders, kind of like a checklist. These are all the things you have to consider to ensure a safe and successful reopening. At some schools, the schools have the capacity to use their lockers because they have more space and a fewer number of students, and they can spread out to use their lockers. So we, those decisions, whether or not the students will be using their lockers, is a building-based decision. There may be some decisions where they have additional storage space in the classroom. They have additional, their students are using their backpacks or taking advantage of additional storage spaces elsewhere. And so the lockers may not be an option. But all of our schools are creating a safe plan based on, it's highly contextualized, right? So it's based on the number of students you have, the number of students in each cohort, the amount of space you had, and then we also have to factor in supervision. We want to make sure that whatever we plan for, we have staff to supervise those respective activities, again, to ensure that the transitions will be safe for all students.
Thank you so much, Dr. Chapman. Again, I like that choice of language, highly contextualized for each building to be able to develop the plan that's best for their building students and families. So I appreciate that. Thank you so much. My next question then relates to our third quarter ending on March 23rd. There seems to be some confusion around if students switch or transition over to the Digital Academy that they actually have to restart the work from the beginning of the semester even though the quarter ends on March 23rd. So can you all clarify that if a student from middle school on through high school decides tomorrow, I want to transition over to Digital Academy, does that student then have to go all the way back in Digital Academy to the beginning of the semester to start that work as opposed to bringing in the work that has been completed in remote learning and literally picking up at this smaller window, right, for the close of the quarter? And one of the caller's questions kind of related to that, when she shared the experience of her daughter.
Absolutely. So I'm going to go back to the comment that I made earlier regarding highly contextualized. This is another one of those conversations that is very highly contextualized. So it really depends on the student's current schedule. We know that the content and the curriculum in the Digital Academy is different from the content and the curriculum in hybrid learning, right? So we're on two separate curriculum, curricular materials. And then what we're asking for all families that are making the choice, for whatever reason, to transition from hybrid learning to the Digital Academy, that they meet with the school counselor. And, Dr. Pierce, you'll love this, we're requiring that they review that graduation plan before finalizing those decisions so that we can be clear and the families and the students can be clear in terms of this is the current path that the student is on now? What will they lose or gain if they transition to the Digital Academy in the fourth quarter? So we know that making transitions at any time of the year is not easy, right? But we also want to recognize that we really want to keep our students in hybrid learning as they wrap up and finish the last semester, the last quarter of the school year. It would be our hope that students continue on the current learning path that they're on and not make that transition at this time. But if we know parents have choice, we want our parents to be able to lean into the choices and the options that they have, we are requesting that they meet with the counselor and review their current graduation plan for high school students and review their current schedule for middle school students. We want to recognize that not all courses that our students are currently enrolled in in middle school and high school are offered in the Digital Academy. And so some students may, you know, perhaps they're in their middle school, they're enrolled in band. They will lose that opportunity if they transition to the Digital Academy. Some, all the foreign language courses may not be offered in Digital Academy. There are several different examples, too many for us to name here. But our strongest recommendation, and it's a requirement, that any student that is transitioning out of our high schools, that they have to meet with their school counselor, review their graduation plan so that everyone, parent, student, teacher, is clear about what that transition will look like. And there can be some opportunities as well as some challenges with making that transition. So we want to make sure that everyone makes, has an informed decision before finalizing those decisions.
Thank you so much, Dr. Chapman. As Dr. Breeden would say, you are singing my song or speaking my language, right? So you segue into one of my important questions that I ask every board meeting. Where do we stand in terms of our graduation plans for our senior class? What number has signed those? What percentage of our seniors and their caregivers understand what they need to do to get their students across the graduation stage?
Well, Dr. Pierce, since we last reported on this number, we have made, our school-based staff, all the kudos goes to our school-based staff, right? Our school counselors, our principals, our administrators, our senior counselors, our partners that have been leaning in to support this work and make those connections, meaningful connections with families. As of right now, we're up to 75%. So we have almost 2,000. It's 1,995 to be exact, but almost 2,000 graduation plans that have been signed. Again, we still have more progress to make. We are confident that once our students are back onsite, on campus, we'll have an opportunity to have more face-to-face interactions. We can print out a hard copy of those graduation planners, have the students take them home, if the students can sign them, as well as take them home and get their parents to sign them. So we're continuing to work on getting those graduation planners signed. We've made considerable progress since last month and will continue to prioritize this work because we value the partnership with our families. We want to make sure that our families are very clear and have a very good understanding of what it takes to get their seniors across the finish line.
Thank you so much, Dr. Chapman. You just don't know how much, my office is freezing. So I have to be honest, but you have definitely warmed my heart and my spirit. Even though the number is 75%, what you are doing with the transparency and communicating to our families the information that they need to know is critically important because every student, every family wants to participate in graduation. And I truly believe that it is on us to make sure that we're reaching out, that we're communicating to them so they are clear and that when June rolls around, there's not one family that can say, I wasn't informed, that my child wasn't on track until two days before graduation. And so I thank you, I thank Dr. Dixon, I thank our school-based, our school-based teams, our security and safety officers, everybody, our partners who got out there and knocked on doors. Trust me, I'm not completely thrilled with the 75%, but I see the progress that we're making and I appreciate that. Thank you, thank you. My final question then relates to how are we going to address potential cancellations of classes when it comes to our high school and our middle school band? So in elementary school, we've made closures by grade level. And this makes sense because elementary school, you know, you're homogeneously grouped. However, when it comes to our middle schools and especially our high schools, you're more heterogeneously grouped. So how will closures be communicated? Or what is our plan if we do not have coverage for, say, a Latin class or a particular academic area?
So, Dr. Pierce, I'll be happy to jump in, but I'm going to pass the mic to my colleague, Mike DeFabo. But I appreciate your question because you're naming one of the challenges that we have certainly been discussing at a team, as a team. When we opened elementary schools, we got it down to a science, right? We know exactly what we need to do. First, we look at classroom reassignment. We look at whether or not we have a sub. And then we can explore whether or not it's feasible to close a classroom, close a grade level, close a building at the last resort. But certainly, staffing at the secondary level presents a whole new set of challenges. But we have been brainstorming and working on strategies to address those challenges. For example, as of right now, when there is a teacher that's out at the secondary level, typically, there's other teachers that can cover on their duty for that particular teacher. In addition, we can also do classroom reassignment depending on whether or not the room and the space allow. So remember, we still have to follow those health and safety guidelines. There may be some classrooms where we can say these, a number of students, maybe five students, can be students can be reassigned to this particular class for a period. What's easier about secondary is that we're looking at coverage period by period. When we're looking at coverage at the elementary level, it's for the whole day, right? So when a first grade teacher is not onsite, it's for the whole day. They're not onsite for the whole day. And then for secondary, when we're looking at coverage, it's, you can look at it by blocks. Which period do we need coverage? And that allows us a little bit more flexibility. But beyond that, I'm going to pass the mic to my colleague, Mike DeFabo.
Thanks so much, Angela, and thank you for your question, Board Member Pierce. I think you have really highlighted for us the, the challenge that we've been working on recently. The, we know that our middle schools and certainly our high schools are just a different, it's a different space, and we know that the, the schedules are different. And so specifically, we've been looking at exactly what Angela was talking about. We also know that our interaction with our principals is going to really be ramped up. We, we talked about contextualized circumstances previously. Now it's even more contextualized because of schedules. Every, every schedule is different, every student's schedule is different. And so we're going to be working not only on ensuring that we have building substitutes on hand to step in, and many of our secondary schools have already have those people in place. But we're also looking at exactly what Angela said, which is having people jump in during duty periods when available, ensuring that we have the space in place for our health and safety guidelines. And then we're going to have to be intentional in a different way about what closing a classroom looks like because closing a grade level isn't the same thing because we have teachers working across grade levels. So we're, we're moving into this new space with eyes wide open. And we're already working with our principals on some of our teachers who have leaves. And we're going to be looking again at all of our leave data moving forward to ensure that we have as much availability of staff as possible and have staff able to step in when available.
Thank you so much, Mr. Fabio. I appreciate that. Again, to Dr. Chapman, thank you so very much for all your responses and hard work. I appreciate you and I'm sure our community appreciates you as well. Thank you so much, Dr. Dixon and President Adair.
Thank you, Dr. Pierce. We will now go to Board Member Cole.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you, Madam President. Very quickly, the question I, I keep coming back to and, and that I really think it's, it's going to be critical for us to find some solutions around are identifying those impediments, those barriers that are preventing us from coming to some sort of terms about an alternative plan that integrates online synchronous learning with hybrid learning. So it opens up a classroom simultaneously for a family and a student who do not want to participate. And this is, this is something that's been recurring over time here, and we heard it tonight with one of our callers. We have to solve this problem. I think that whatever, whatever it's going to take for us to come to the table and figure that out, I think we need to do that. Again, this option being, how do we identify the challenge and find solution for a student, students, families who don't want to come to school but still want to learn alongside their class synchronously? How do we do that? What are the barriers and impediments that are creating this issue that don't make this a viable option at this point in time for students and families? That's my first question.
Mr. Cole, I'll have Dr. Stanford speak to that question. Mr. Dr. Stanford led the conversations alone with our HR team and others that got us to the current agreement that we have about our blended learning options. Dr. Stanford?
Excuse me. Thank you, Superintendent, Madam President, to Mr. Cole. Yeah, the, as the superintendent has indicated, those terms and conditions of work were part of the, of the bargaining process with our teachers' union as we were developing the MOU for, for the return to a blended model. And so the, you know, that was one of the topics that was a part of that negotiation process. Can you, can you please repeat that? We were getting feedback, Dr. Stanford was talking in the background, a TV playing or something.
Sorry about that. What I was saying is that the, as the superintendent indicated, the, the terms and conditions of the return to a blended model was a part of that, of that negotiation process with, with the, the teachers' union back in the fall. And so the, the topic that you are raising was a part of those negotiations. And so we, we had to have those conversations and, you know, that, that was a part of those, those, those negotiations.
I thank you for that. I'm a believer of a blameless, blameless environment. We don't have to point fingers, and I'm not saying that's what you're doing. What I really am trying to do is drive a solution. We, we now know that community will has built up to a point that is calling on us to identify another viable option that allows students the opportunity to study asynchronous, asynchronously next to their hybrid learning students at the same time with the same teacher in the same class. So whatever we have to do to figure out, and I would love for us even as our ongoing engagement discusses, discussions ensue, I think it's important for us at that point in time to maybe put this before us and figure out what those solutions can possibly be, hear what those issues are, and figure out how we address that for our students and their families. I, I just, I, I think that's my, but that's my biggest question at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Cole. Over to Vice President Reyes.
Thank you, President Adair. I have a couple of questions concerning our seniors. So we talked a little bit about bringing them back into the school building and so forth. And being a parent of a senior myself, I know that they're concerned and that they haven't had a senior year. So I was wondering what the district was doing to help them feel like seniors? Are we having some sort of activities perhaps when they're coming back into the buildings? I know that's just around the corner. And maybe does one of those activities or can one of those activities help with the signing of our graduation plans? That's my first question.
All right. Thank you for that question. Vice President Reyes, we know that there are inherent energies around your senior year and their senior activities. And when you think about last year, we had a convocation for all of our seniors. Do you remember that? And so this year, here's a list of activities that we have for our seniors. Monday, March 8th, we are going to kick off our Senior Fest campaign. That's right, it'll be on radio, social media. And what is Senior Fest? Senior Fest is a celebration that will begin when our seniors come back to school and we'll see them all the way through graduation. So on March 8th, that's a Monday, we kick off the announcement on March 10th. We're going to do a Week Care Wednesday focused on seniors. So anyone that wants to volunteer for the Week Care Wednesday focused on seniors, making sure parents know about all the supports that are out there for our seniors and to make sure they're on track. And then on set, on the 17th, that is the event. That is a virtual convocation where we're going to have a battle of the bands from schools. Our students are going to be the emcees, games, prizes, and school-based breakout rooms. So our students, while they're all hyped up, they can talk about the road to graduations. We're also going to go out with our yard signs again and door hangers. So that information will be coming out. There'll be a T-shirt design contest where our seniors will design the shirt that demonstrates their resiliency in this year of 2021. And Senior Fest is sponsored by, of course, Columbus City Schools, the City of Columbus, I Know I Can, and the Columbus Urban League. And we're really, really, really excited about it, so excited about it that there is a video. Scott Wartman, if you can queue up the video for Senior Fest 2021. Hey, Alexa, are you ready?
I'm ready. Hey, Kevin, are you ready?
I'm ready. Are you ready?
I'm ready, but are you ready?
But wait, ready for what?
Hello, class of 2021 seniors. As your superintendent, I want you to realize how proud I am of all of you. Your teachers, counselors, and administrators feel the same way. Graduating this year from Columbus City Schools would have a permanent place in history because of the global pandemic.
Hey, class of 2021. I'm a senior at Eastmore Academy High School and my name is Hayley Moore.
What's up, y'all? My name is Aaron. I represent the best high school in the district, Northland High School.
What's up, seniors? My name is Chloe and I am representing Beechcroft High School. Go Cougars, class of 2021.
Hi, my name is Fatima and I'm representing the home of the stars, Centennial High School.
Hi, I'm Noah. I'm from Four K's High School.
Hey, class of 2021. My name is Alexia Wilburn. I am a proud class of 2021 senior from West High School. Go Cowboys.
Hey, seniors, it's Alexa representing the Columbus North International Lions.
Hey there, seniors. My name is Kevin Demola representing the Beechcroft Cougars.
Hey, seniors, my name is Talia and I represent Beechcroft High School.
Hey, seniors, Senior Fest is coming soon.
So what is Senior Fest 2021? Senior Fest 2021 is all about us. We have joined our district and community partners to plan some fun activities. So get excited, seniors. We will have a T-shirt design contest, speakers, and some other great prizes for you as well.
Senior Fest, music, fun, prizes, and more.
So let's do this. Let's get into Senior Fest 2021.
Senior Fest 2021, a time to celebrate our success and our future.
Although COVID-19 has thrown us off of our game a little bit, we deserve to celebrate our successes and have a little fun.
Live DJ giveaways, fun, be there.
So celebrate success with the CCS.
CCS, celebrate success, 2021 Senior Fest.
A festival to celebrate you, an opportunity for your classmates, the district, and our community to see you through the finish line.
Senior Fest 2021, coming soon.
Go, seniors!
Can't you feel the energy of Senior Fest 2021 and the beautiful diversity of, of our young people? I am, we are so excited about it. And, uh, board members, of course, you are invited to Senior Fest 2021. And we meet with our building principals tomorrow just to tighten things up a bit, but the kickoff and the announcement, March 8th, and we're going to celebrate this rite of passage for our young people, 13 years of education. And this is the time to celebrate each and every one of them. Senior Fest 2021.
Thank you, and that is very exciting. I, I hope that our seniors are encouraged and know that the district is really thinking about them and understands where they're at right now during COVID. Last year, as we were planning graduations, we ran into an issue with all districts were trying to order their cap and gowns all at the same time. So I'm, I want to make sure that I, we don't have that concern this year. I know we're in March, but we have lots of schools in the district. Everybody's excited of the possibility of going in person. Yes, going in person, so that's another exciting part of how we're moving and transitioning from what happened last year to ensuring that this year's seniors have an opportunity. And I know there's going to be guidelines and processes and possibly some limitations to crowd to ensure that we're following COVID guidelines. But one of the concerns again last year was we were kind of running around with the caps and gowns. Have we already started working ensuring that we have all our logistics in place for graduations for 2021?
I'll tell you, Dr. Chapman has already been on that. Dr. Chapman, would you like to take the baton?
Absolutely. So yes, we have centralized our ordering for caps and gowns this year based on the feedback we received from our experience last year. So we have taken the reins. We have placed all those orders for all of our schools centrally. So we have one order that we're making those placements and we can follow up on the tracking to make sure that we receive those materials in due time.
Thank you. And, uh, Dr. Chapman, since you're on, so, you know, we talked a lot about making sure that our graduation plans are signed up and signed. Our seniors, our parents need to make sure that they're talking to graduation coaches, principals. Who should they be reaching out to? Where should our parents be going? So as previously mentioned, and this happens every year, you know, where parents, we're getting close to the end, we're getting close to graduation, and we get one or two parents with a question saying, I was not aware that my student needed this, or they still need that. And as a district, as an organization, we want to make sure that every child that has the opportunity to graduate on time graduates on time. So what should our parents be doing or where should they be reaching out to ensure that they have all that information?
Thank you, Board Member Reyes, for that question. So first, let's start with the graduation plan. The copies of the graduation plan have been mailed to every household of every senior. We have also pushed those plans out into the parent portal. So if parents have access to the parent portal, you should see a graduation planner in the parent portal waiting for your signature. So we have reached many families, but we're still working on making sure that everyone has a signed graduation plan. So acknowledging that you've received it and acknowledging that you understand the path that your student or your senior needs to take to graduate is key. So that's the first step. And then the second step, I would say the primary contact for our seniors, if you have questions about course completion or whether or not you're on track to graduate, the first question, the first contact would be with the senior counselor, okay? Not all students have a graduation coach. We've assigned our graduation coaches to work with small groups of students who made and may need, may need additional push over the finish line. So I would say that the first line of defense would be reaching out to the senior counselor. And all of our high schools have identified one counselor that will be working primarily with all of our seniors.
And if I could add, Dr. Chapman, you see, we have, we got the one-two punch going here, right? So she's absolutely correct, but if you remember, I said March 10th is Week Care Wednesday, and we're actually calling families of seniors, going through that checklist for them. Hey, you got the graduation plan in the mail, did you sign it and get back in? Have you talked to your school counselor? So one, we need volunteers for Week Care Wednesday, March 10th, for the focus on seniors. So if you can, and Board Member Reyes, I hope that answered your question. In the event there are family members that aren't watching tonight, you know, our transformation and leadership, our curriculum department, we have all been our curriculum department, we have all been working together on this. And we are going to reach out to our parents by phone to make sure they have all the resources. When we do the yard signs, we even have door hangers that are going to ask those questions of families. Have you signed your graduation planner? Have you contacted your counselor? Are you ready for graduation? So we are really, really, really excited about Senior Fest. It starts, and it's going to see our kids all the way through graduation.
And Ms. Gilson, we're very excited as a board. As you can see, all my colleagues are talking about being involved and making sure that we're engaged and volunteering. So of course, I'm going to ask the language, especially since we're reaching out to our parents. And if I get a door hanger in my door, but I am not an English proficient, what am I going to be expecting as a parent who wants to make sure I'm involved with my child who speaks English but may not be communicating to me in my language?
I'm glad you asked that question. So on the door hangers, we're going to have our languages. All of our languages represented is going to be front and back. Now, when we make those phone calls for We Care Wednesday, we're using Vocal Link, and we are using our bilingual liaisons. And believe it or not, in the past, we've even had Spanish teachers to say, "Hey, I want to volunteer to work with Spanish families." And some of our IAs will work with the Nepali families. So this is a full-court press, and it's for each and every one of our families to make sure they get this information so that they can participate and that they are ready for their graduation.
Well, I'm very excited. I hope I will definitely reach out to my organization, Catholic Social Services. As you know, we have our seniors, our senior folks that work with our seniors in school. So our 70-year-olds or 80-year-old seniors that are more than ready and been itching to get back into working with our kids. And then I'll make sure I reach out to my department, our Lady of Guadalupe Center, and ask our bilingual staff to volunteer. And as you know, a lot of our other partners, ECTS and so forth, I hope that all of us can join in and we'll all, as a board, are willing to share that information with our partners to make March 10th definitely a great opportunity to reach out to our families. So thank you very much for that information.
And thank you for your question, and thank you all for volunteering, and we will get that information to you.
Thank you, Vice President Reyes. I lost my list in the chat. I think we're at Board Member Ragland for his second question. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. And I want to thank you all for the focus on our seniors here. I had the pleasure of visiting East High School yesterday and spoke with Mr. Richardson about his seniors very specifically. And one of the things that came up, the finish line is not necessarily just June. We do have a summer graduation program. And I want to mention this to give a little bit more support to those seniors who may be a bit further behind and would need that extra time to get up the snuff and still graduate in our summer graduation later on in the year. Please do not give up. That really is the message. We have multiple opportunities for you to do your thing and participate. Make sure that you graduate later on in the year. So keep at it, keep knocking down that door. And you guys are doing great. We're looking forward to celebrating you coming up real soon. My next, my question is back to Dr. Stanford to Board Member Cole's previous point. When we hear from parents that ask us about our ability to have students be led by a teacher, and you say that there are some concerns contractually that prohibit us from doing that. Are you saying that we approached our bargaining unit with this opportunity, and we just weren't able to get that done? And so, you know, there's just absolutely no way that we're going to be able to do that? Or is there an opportunity to go back knowing that we have public support for doing this type of learning? Is there an opportunity for us to go back and renegotiate so that the will of the parents can be realized?
Madam President, to Mr. Ragland, yeah, anytime there is any sort of conversation about the contract and the terms and conditions of employment, there's always opportunities to have more conversation and to have the, and to continue that dialogue, especially as we learn more and as we are engaged in the work, you know, as we open more schools up and become familiar with what's needed for our students. And so, yes, there's always that opportunity to continue the conversation and to reengage on issues.
What would you suggest that families do in order to let it be known that this is something that they desire so that we could maybe attempt to get them what it is that they would need? Are there suggestions that you would have regarding family advocacy for this approach to learning?
Sure. I can offer my email address. It is jstanford, And if parents have concerns or have ideas and suggestions, I'm more than happy to accept those emails and to make it a part of the work that we are on, the ongoing work that we have to do.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Board Member Brown.
Thank you. I just want a brief opportunity to commend all of the staff and administrators and teachers who have worked on all of this. The presentation tonight has made me feel very good and happy and has made me smile. And I appreciate all the good work you all have done. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Brown. We have two requests for very brief comments, very brief. So the first to Board Member Cole.
Thank you. I appreciate, and I really hope that we take the steps necessary to figure out what those barriers and impediments are. I also want to make sure that we put into correct context in terms of time and framing. That at the time even that the contract was negotiated, this is early COVID. This is a time where there was tremendous ambiguity. There was a time where there was no vaccine in the marketplace. And most assuredly, no one who even received vaccinations, and most certainly our staff. So I think it's super important that we, again, in the spirit of making sure, and I think we're doing that, we're keeping to that, but remaining blameless. Because it's about the challenge, and it's about the solution to the challenge. And I think that we can figure it out. If it's a technology issue that our instructors, that our teachers need, then maybe that, I know we've got capacity there. So all I'm saying is, is I really want to work with us to take the next step towards really identifying solutions for the challenge. And I thank you for the time.
Thank you. And our final comment will be from Dr. Pierce.
Thank you so much, President Adair. For a moment, I think it's important that we frame this conversation also in the context of when we are talking about, and our superintendent has said this numerous times, how do we come out of COVID-19? If we go back to school as normal, we've done a true disservice. The conversation needs to be expanded beyond this idea of asynchronous, synchronous, remote, hybrid learning to a conversation around how do we begin to leverage and utilize technology in ways that are beneficial and meaningful and engaging for our students and staff? I think the current way that we are having this conversation, and be it brief comments, pits kind of our union in this position as to, you know, whatever happened during contract and negotiation, right? It ultimately gets us to this. Who was responsible for the decision? Can we go back? Can we rework it? And the opportunity before us is not reviewing or going back to, can we go back to that contract? But rather, how do we move forward knowing that the way we did education in the past can no longer be the same? Knowing that we now have new technologies? Knowing that our staff may still have concerns about going into the classroom even though they have vaccines? That our families may have concerns about their students going into the classroom even though vaccines are out there? So I would just like us to, you know, be mindful of how we frame the conversation in that entire context, leaning into a conversation that puts us in a position as a board as we think about our goals and guardrails. If this is important to us, then this conversation should also be had when we talk about our guardrails coming up here in the future. This conversation should also be important when we talk about the portrait of a grad. So I just want to ground us in the work that we're continuing to do as we introduce or continue to have a conversation on remote learning, asynchronous, and synchronous learning.
Thank you, Dr. Pierce. I mean, it's a very good reminder of the conversations that we've had, especially the equity conversation we just had last week. And it is true, we cannot go back to the way it was. This is our opportunity to really advance what education looks like for all of our students and our staff. And we have to do so in partnership with all of our staff and our unions and our community and our families and our students, number one, because they have great ideas. So I'm excited that we're having these conversations and sharing these things. And really, that's what I know will be shown in our strategic plan as we go forward. And I'm excited when that finally gets unveiled and we can get working on it. So thank you for those comments, Dr. Pierce, and grounding us back into our mission about, you know, systemic change. That's really what we're all here to work through. So, all right. Thank you, Madam Superintendent, for your report. Thank you, Board Members, for your dialogue. We will now move to item seven, which is the report from our internal auditor. Hello, Auditor Smith.
Hello, Board President Adair. And I do have a report this evening. President Adair, Vice President Reyes, and members of the board. The Audit and Accountability Committee met virtually February the 25th. The meeting was facilitated by Internal Audit Director Kevin O'Connor, and I would like to thank Kevin very much. The meeting was a hybrid meeting with Chair Ragland and Vice Chair Beckerly onsite at 3700 and the others remote. But since that meeting, we've had, we've had had interest from other committee members who would also like to be onsite. One agenda item required a vote by committee, and others were for the committee's informational purposes. For purposes of this report, I have broken the reports into two buckets as follows. Item one was the review, vetting, and vote to send forward to the board a planned audit engagement report on the controls over Operation Fix-It. This audit was voted for release, and a copy has been sent to all board members and a copy published on the district's internet site. The audit steps were heavily weighted to controls over change orders. There were opportunities for improvement that were noted, and there were five issues discussed during the audit. I'm sorry, there were five issues discussed during the Audit and Accountability Committee meeting. Three items were rated at high, which means if left uncorrected, this increases the likelihood of errors and noncompliance with those three issues. Two items were rated as moderate. Management has provided corrective action plans and have already implemented some changes in response to the audit. At a later date, a follow-up engagement will be planned to determine the effectiveness of the corrective action plan implemented. The results of the follow-up engagement will be reported to the board at that time. Management was receptive and cooperative during the engagement, which is greatly appreciated. I know that was a very high level. So before I move into the second item or the, any issues on the Operation Fix-It report, I believe it was sent out probably late yesterday. So I don't know if you had a chance to really dive into it. So what I would like to do was to go ahead, and then if you have any issues or questions on the report, you can always reach out to me at a later date. The second and final bucket are items that are presented for review and discussion, but no committee action is required. The Chief Financial Officer and the Chief of Operations presented reports on current risk items within their area of responsibility. Also, the Office of Internal Audit's current dashboard falls into this category. This report is intended to capture the current status of all engagements included in the approved work plan, alert the committee of any additions, deletions, and the reason for the deletion, I'm sorry, the deletions and additions. And now, if I can share my screen, I will walk you through the most current dashboard report. Can I get permission to share my screen, please? Mr. Wortman or Ms. Nichols? Can I get permission to share my screen?
You should have permission. You made a co-host. If you just...
Oh, I see. Thank you. I know, after almost a year, I... There we go. I'll probably get it when we go back to in-person meetings. Okay. So this is the dashboard report that was discussed at Audit and Accountability Committee meeting. And the format of the report is the same. What changes are the numbers? So we'll just get down to the first summary, which is a bar graph. Without going into detail, I can tell you that the reports issued have increased because of the issuance of the Operation Fix-It report. The work in progress have increased because of now we are actually doing work in the special education unit. And then there were some work, some audit engagements that we had not started working on last month, and now they have moved to the planning phase. If you want, once again, more detail on the actual engagements that are moving, you could go down to the Audit Plan Update Report. And you can see, once again, the detail of each engagement and where they stand in the flow. Once again, no new delayed reports have been added. We're still, once again, hoping to be able to finish the actual onsite school audits. And then, once again, you can see where each engagement stands. So if we go down to... Sorry, go back up one. If we go down to item number four, which is Operation Fix-It, we're just calling it Capital Improvements. You can see that report has been issued whereas last month it was probably in the fieldwork phase. So this report shows you what's changing as far as the individual engagements. And then for another look, there's our Chevron report, which shows you a total picture of, once again, here's the Operation Fix-It engagement. And I will correct the uniform naming. I just noticed that. But you can see that report has gone all the way from planning to report being issued. The next are any additions or deletions to the audit plan. And as I stated previously, we have no additions and we have no deletions. That could change at any moment, though. And once it does change, we bring those to Audit Committee, get their feedback, their recommendation, and then bring that forward to the board. Outstanding issues, once again, the format doesn't change, but what would change is we would have added any comments related to the Operation Fix-It. So you would see those noted in the report, in this report. If any issues were closed, you would see a change in those numbers from what you saw last month. And once again, we do a similar tracking for any type of external auditor recommendations. So you can see we're keeping track of the Auditor of State, WCBE, the work done by the Council of Great City Schools, and the work in our own, I'm sorry, someone's car horn is going off. I don't know if you can hear that or not. But anyway, the work that we do on our own processes, which we call our Quality Assurance Improvement Process. So that's the work that one of our staff did on the quality of our work. And we also keep track of those issues, and you will see movement on those issues as the year progresses. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions, Board members? Okay, any comments from the chairs?
Thank you, Madam President. The next meeting of the Audit and Accountability Committee will be on Thursday, March 25. We will have an in-person meeting from 3700. Meeting will start at 3:30 with a report from the Auditor of State. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, then we are going to move on. Thank you, Auditor Smith, for your report. We are going to move on to item eight, which is report from our Treasurer, which we are not expecting ones this evening. But hello, Mr. Treasurer.
Good evening. No, no surprise here. No, no report and announcement. We have a FAC meeting, which will continue to be virtual next week, on Wednesday, the 10th. It will begin 4:00 p.m. as usual.
Thank you. Any additional information from the Chair's Finance? No. Okay. And just so everyone knows, it is the option of the committees to decide how they would like to have their meetings. They can stay virtual, they can do hybrid, they can meet in person. If any in-person hybrid-type meetings will be here at 3700 in this beautiful space that you all can see in the wide view of the board meeting room. Okay. All right, we are going to move down to item nine, which we have a resolution. So this resolution started with kind of a different purpose in mind when we started writing it. And it was because a lot of school districts in the area were really trying to communicate with the federal government about working on ways to address assessments and how and what mandatory assessments were to be done right now in COVID for this, for the rest of this year. So in the midst of kind of creating that, and other boards in the area had passed resolutions a few weeks ago, we got guidance from the federal government. So that guidance came out. They said that we are going to do assessments and but gave the states discretion about being flexible. So we are now kind of shifting that resolution to address our General Assembly. And so, Board members, I offer the resolution urging the General Assembly to ensure your students will not be penalized by state assessments from graduating from high school during the 2020, 2021 year. I will say that we know that the General Assembly has already extended this grace to our school districts by not penalizing any school districts with the state report card because of assessments. And so we are asking, more specifically now, to use that kind of grace and flexibility that the federal government is allowing to extend that grace to our seniors and students graduating. So let me go ahead and offer the resolution to you. Whereas it is the statutory duty of the Columbus City Schools, the district, to deliver the educational programs and services to the schoolchildren of the district. And whereas the state of Ohio requires annual statewide standardized testing in accordance with federal mandates, and whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has created instructional challenges and forced educators to quickly adapt to new practices during the 2021, 2020, 2021 school year, and whereas the administration of standardized tests may create additional unnecessary health risks to some students, and whereas the district and its educators already conduct formative assessments, assessments that during a pandemic are four of them are helpful and accurate in addressing student need, and whereas the results of the statewide mandated standardized testing will not be known until after the school year has ended, and will be of little assistance to students or the district's needs to address any disruptive learning opportunities district students may face this school year, and whereas education professionals in the district and formative assessments are best able to assess those COVID-19-related needs, and whereas the district and its educators are committed to ensuring every district student is able to succeed. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the board urges the students not be penalized by their inability to participate in state assessments and meeting requirements for graduation, and be it further resolved that, given the challenges of the past two school years, those students who have met or who are on track to meet curricular requirements for graduation during these trying times, be permitted to graduate this school year, provided the students' principal, teachers, and counselor believe they are prepared to do so, and be it further resolved that the board supports legislation that achieves the purposes identified above. So this, this, thank you. I was going to offer it, but seconded. Any questions or comments from the board? A Board Member Brown?
Yeah. I think that this is really good, especially as it's been adjusted because of the changed circumstances. And I think it was, those revisions in large part were the work of Dr. Roush, and he did a nice job on this. I'm happy to support it.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions? And yes, thank you to Dr. Roush, she did have to make some edits for us. Okay, Dr. Pierce?
I would just like to echo Board Member Brown's comments as well. I think the adjustments were excellent and spot on. And at the same time, I would also like to acknowledge the fact that our board is very forward-thinking in terms of this issue, helping to be proactive so our students, again, don't have yet another hurdle to face when it comes to this year.
Vice President Reyes?
Thank you, President Adair. I also, I just want to, in the spirit of collaboration, just state what your earlier comments were about other districts also addressing this issue. I think it's important for the public to know and for all to know that there are a lot of issues that come and impact public schools in particular, that it's nice to see, and I hope that the community can see that other districts and our district are joining together to ensure that we address what's best for our students. So a lot of people question is that where are some of the legislations that impact public schools come from? Well, they come from the General Assembly. So this is one of the indications of where we're asking them to help our students. So it doesn't only stop here. It's board members and school districts suggesting this. We're also going to ask our community, as this is an important subject, to call the representatives and ensure that they are looking at some of the resolutions that are being provided by the various school districts. So I want to thank our colleagues in the other surrounding districts and in the state of Ohio for addressing and allowing us to join in with these concerns.
Thank you, Vice President Reyes. Any additional questions, comments? Okay, please call the role.
Ms. Beckerly?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Dr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Ragland?
Yes.
Vice President Reyes?
Yes.
President Adair?
Yes.
That motion carried?
Thank you so much. And we will have Dr. Roush step to our friends at the General Assembly. Okay, we are going to move down to item 10, our consent agenda. Our consent agenda this evening consists of item 11.1 to item 24.1. Are there any items that a board member would like to remove from the consent agenda for a separate vote? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
That we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Member Brown. Second?
Second.
Thank you.
I missed the second. I'm sorry. Ramona, thank you very much.
Sorry.
That's okay. I'm trying to watch and listen at the same time.
All right, so you have our motion and our second. Any items you would like to discuss on the consent agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none, please call the role.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Dr. Pierce?
With the exception of 14.1 and 14.7, I am abstaining from those two, but yes, on all the others.
So it's 14.1 and 14.7?
That's correct.
Thank you. Mr. Ragland?
Yes.
Vice President Reyes?
Yes.
President Adair?
Yes.
Ms. Beckerly?
Yes.
And that motion carries?
Thank you. Can I ask Dr. Pierce a clarifying question, just to be sure? Because in my notes, it said we are expecting 14.4 and 14.7. Just want to make sure you're abstaining from the right items.
I apologize. Yes, you are correct. It is 14.4 and 14.7. That is correct.
We will, we will correct that then.
I had that corrected. I had that in my notes too, but I was, I was going with live data here, so.
You got to call me on it. Just call me on it, Mr. Treasurer. Just say, hey, Dr. Pierce, come on. Told you this office is cold. I'm freezing.
Okay.
It's cold in here, too.
All right, we've corrected it, and we have passed the consent agenda. So thank you, Board members. Okay, we will move into announcements. And I'm going to start our announcements off. Scott, would you like to share the beautiful photo? So I want to take a second to thank our First Church of God, who has made a generous donation of 65 laptops to Walnut Ridge High School. And they delivered those laptops. We know that a few months ago, Bishop Clark and youth pastor Foltz represented, presented us with a check of $25,000 to purchase the Chromebooks. And so we're so excited to get them and see them and have them deliver those to the school. So we wanted to just thank them so much, and also thank them for hosting one of our learning extension centers where our students can go on those remote days so that they can have supports that they need. So thank you so much for Church of God for that donation and for the laptops. Thank you, Scott, for sharing that photo with us. Board members, any comments, announcements from you? A Board Member Beckerly, then Board Member Ragland?
Okay, now I'm going to ask my faithful assistant, Scott Wortman, to pull up some slides for me. I have a very exciting rise-up tale to share, and it has to do with some incredible COVID collaborating that was going on at Fort Hayes over the past few months. So at Fort Hayes, there are two, well, the Career Center programs include, oh, I lost my, two onsite programs at Grant Riverside, Grant Hospital, Riverside Hospital, and both of them were shut down due to COVID. So this screenshot here of a Zoom is showing a collaboration between the two job training program teachers at the Grant Riverside Program, the Fort Hayes Student Success Store teacher and students, so the person, the teacher that runs it, the film and TV career tech teacher, the Career Center Guidance Counselor, and the Fort Hayes Librarian. So these are all people who came together to solve the problem of this problem, these two programs being shut down and these students not being able to receive their career training. Okay, can you go to the next one, Scott? So these are just some shots of what, the first day back and how happy these students were to return. And also, one of the first things they had to do was find another place to do their onsite instruction, because usually there's onsite instruction that's part of the program at the hospital. So they had to create space where they could do their onsite instruction at the Career Buildings of Fort Hayes. Okay, next one, please? Some of the initial things they did were projects to pack up student project packs so that their virtual fellow students could also participate with them when they were doing their classes. Then the librarian in English, some English teachers and the librarian at Fort Hayes came up with projects for these students to work on, to deliver books to students and teachers. Again, integrating the Life Schools instruction into some of the projects that they created that needed to be done. So there were real-life problems that needed to be solved on the Fort Hayes campus. The last one is a gardening project, which they're planning to integrate into the Fort Hayes' garden project. And eventually, which is really cool, have the gardens provide products to the Student Success Store that's at Fort Hayes. And then, okay, Scott, you can go to the next one. They started thinking even bigger, and they realized that, well, there was a move or an intention to create a satellite office or a satellite location for the Student Success Store at Fort Hayes, because the campus is so large, the students in the Career Center weren't necessarily accessing the Student Success Store that was on the high school side. So now, again, these students who program was essentially canceled are part of this process to sort out the out-of-date goods that were part of the store that were left there when the pandemic hit. They're organizing clothing, and they're participating in the planning process of expanding the Student Success Store across campus. So this became an even richer and deeper real-life skills training program for these students. Okay, next one, and involved all different facets, facets of the Fort Hayes community, which brings us to some of the film and TV students in the Career Center who were, had done during their project when they were still in person last year, a video about promoting the Student Success Store, and submitted it to a contest for Business Professionals of America. So when these students found out that the students from the Grant Riverside Hospital were working to promote the expansion of the Student Success Store across campus, they got involved, along with their teacher of film and TV at Fort Hayes, and came up with flyers and promotional plan, and eventually are going to working toward creating a video to promote this whole process of expanding the Student Success Store. All right, thanks, Scott. Next one. Just briefly, I didn't mention them all at first, because I think that the categories of the collaboration were more relevant, but Kara Randolph, a Grand Hospital instructor, Julie Peoples, the Riverside Hospital instructor, Maria Angel, a Community-Based Programs Strategic Coordinator, Julie Kittinger is the Film Television Instructor, Dana Matounis is the Fort Hayes Career Center Counsel, Nancy DeLeon is the Fort Hayes English teacher and the person who heads up the Student Success Store, Courtney Johnson's the librarian, and Nicole Herbert Ford is the co-founder and operations chair of the Student Success Store. Student, I cannot talk with this mask. Please forgive me. This is a real challenge. Anyway, and you know, I'm not that great anyway. Anyway, all of these people from all these different categories is just an incredible example of breaking down silos and basically putting the needs of the and basically putting the needs of the student first and being creative and coming up with solutions. And it was just really inspiring to hear this whole story and to see how all of these different groups of students, teachers, programs all came together to make this a success story for these students. Okay, and just the last one. I just wanted to take a moment. I was so happy to see that Joe Brown won this award. And I thought to myself, you know, he and his team deserve a lot of credit because they have been consistently on the front lines of this pandemic from day one. When we didn't know, as Michael Cole mentioned earlier, in the early days of COVID, we had, there were so many unknowns. And yet, our food service staff and Mr. Brown were, you know, almost in real time solving our food problems. And they've pivoted, and they pivoted again. And they were, you know, they changed their mode of how they were providing the food. They, you know, extended their sites. They just really, and with every modality that things changed, and then throughout the whole summer, they were on the front lines. And then, again, when the COVID virus was raging, they were still there. So I'm very, very happy to see that he got this award. And I just thought it was worth mentioning. And I mean, I know we've said it before, but I thought it was worth saying again and to acknowledge the success and the good work of Joe and his team. That's it for me.
Thank you, Board Member Beckerly. I think, was it Board Member Brown who was next? No? Yes? No?
No.
Ragland, I'm sorry. Board Member Ragland, you are next.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say a special thank you to Columbus Rotary, Scott Brown, and Rick Studer, and all of those Rotarians who contributed greatly to our students at Colrain Elementary. We passed legislation today to accept their donation for help that they were giving to our very special students in support of protecting their Chromebooks. And they really have demonstrated service above self. And I just want to make sure that we thank our Rotarians for all of the work that they do throughout the district. But especially today for what they've done for our students at Colrain. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any additional announcements? Dr. Pierce?
Thank you so much, President Adair. So March 1st marked the start of Women's History Month to acknowledge the great contribution that women have made to our society, you know, to the world. From the time that human beings have existed, women have been forging forward to create a better future for our children, our families, and our society. And so, one, I want to acknowledge the work that we're doing when it comes to equity, that we are advancing the opportunities that young girls and women will have within our district. And challenge us to continue to push our sister governing bodies and partners in ways that we can deal with the gender wage disparity that we see, food insecurity, housing, and unaffordable housing in our communities, many of the issues that many of the mothers and caregivers in our community are dealing with. So on this month, again, I want to kind of acknowledge the great work that we're doing around equity, but challenge us to continue moving forward in a very passionate way that pushes the whole city of Columbus and central Ohio to deal with the issues that affect women. And in that vein, I also want to give a huge shout out to, we have a young lady who is a wrestler at Northland High School. And she was able to go to the tournament and actually win. And so, again, this is a field, a sport that's normally dominated by men. She's worked extremely hard and been able to, again, be successful in that sport. And at the same time, it more highlights work that we still have to do in our district to ensure that our young ladies have the same opportunity as our young men, no matter what sport that they're in. But again, congratulations to that young lady over at Northland. Job well done. We're so extremely proud of you. And again, to my colleagues, let us continue to advance forward onward and upward to improve the position of women and caregivers in our community.
Thank you, Dr. Pierce. Any last announcements? Okay, seeing none, we are going to now go into Executive Session. Vice President Reyes, you have the motion.
I move that the Board of Education recess into Executive Session per Section 121.22G1 of the Ohio Rebus Code to consider the employment dismissal discipline of a public employee or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Dr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Ragland?
Yes.
Vice President Reyes?
Yes.
President Adair?
Yes.
Ms. Beckerly?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
That motion carried?
Thank you. We are, we will now go into Executive Session. We will come back to formally close our meeting. But for those staff members who will be leaving us, thank you so much for your participation this evening. And thank you for all the work that you do on behalf of our students.